Today is Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Billingsley?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, we are going to go ahead and move into our moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I do have some sad news, as most of us have heard, staff-wide and in our community, we have recently lost somebody very near and dear to our hearts. He worked for the town of Florence for twenty-six years. He's had close, close relationships and has given so much to our community. I want to take this time during our moment of silence in honor of Gordy Cordova. Thank you very much. Our first item this evening is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any item unless that item is properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, I will open it up and ask Mr. Schaefer if there is anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time.
We have two attendees, but I do not see them unmuting their mics at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and close this call to the public. Item number six is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of the annual subscription to Dude Solutions for the Smart Gov software in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Item B is approval of the November second, November ninth, November sixteenth, December seventh, and December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, town council meeting minutes. And item C is to receive and file the following boards and commissions meeting minutes. November fifth, November nineteenth, December third of two thousand and twenty, Planning and zoning commission minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, is your consent agenda? Does anybody wish to have any item removed at this time? Without seeing anybody so moved, I request a motion.
Motion, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Item seven, new business. Item seven A is discussion approval disapproval to accept funds from Arizona Department of Homeland Security in an amount of a hundred and two thousand, fifty-eight dollars to purchase two license plate readers and one narcotics analyzer to be used for Operation Stone Garden. At this time, I will go ahead and call up our police chief, Mr. Bruce Wells.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is reallocation money from Homeland Security to go ahead and purchase two license plate readers. What we would do with this is attach them to our two homeland security vehicles, and this will enable us immediate access to stolen vehicles and wanted persons. What we're hoping is is this will increase our activity with Operation Stone Garden and decrease criminal activity coming into our communities. We also have on the reallocation is a Truenarc. Truenarc is a drug analyzer that basically should we go and take in some type of drugs, it gives us the ability to immediately analyze what those drugs are instead of having to wait and send those over to DPS. Any questions from the council members?
Are there any questions from council? All right, this is a great program that we have been engaged with for several years and ongoing, so I want to say thank you for that. And with that, we need a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we approve item seven A as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to enter into an inter-agency service agreement between Arizona State Parks and the town of Florence to manage the McFarland State Historic Park through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I will call Mr. Elon Van Alander up.
Mayor, members of council, give me just a moment and I'll get my presentation up here. This is an item that has has come before council before, and we are looking at renewal of the intergovernmental service agreement with McFarland State Historic Park for the town to manage and operate, or to, in agreement for the town to manage and operate the park. Just a little bit of history on this for members of the public that are watching and council. So the town of Florence entered into the original service agreement in two thousand and ten. The current agreement that we're operating under was set to expire in June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, but was approved for two extensions to go forth until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. We are bringing this item forth in combination with two other items this evening. This particular item is for the intergovernmental service agreement with the park, and that would give the town the ability to operate the park from, starting from January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. There are no significant changes to the terms of the agreement. However, there are three changes just to be aware of. The term has extended from a couple-year contract to a five-year contract at this time. There was some change in the procurement language from before. So the town is responsible before for all project procurement. We have now separated that out so that the town is responsible for any projects that it undertakes procurement for those projects, and the state parks, state board is responsible for procurement of any projects they undertake. And then, an updated project list was was included on one of the exhibits of the item, and that's, those are the three main changes that have occurred. So we're looking for this evening is just a vote whether to adopt this ISA and carry it through through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, or the opposite. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Well, thank you for that, and I found your presentation comprehensive. This is something that we have overseen since two thousand and ten. I did notice the list of projects that they had already had incorporated in the presentation. And my only question with taking on the extension of the time is does that allow for future conversations and negotiations in regards to projects that would come up? Because I did see that their scope was pretty limited to ADA items.
So there is opportunity to modify the agreement. At any given point in time, there's language within the agreement that sets out how how we would go forth to do that. So there would be opportunity if that if that were needed. But the state, as part of this agreement, also, if there are projects that come up that are emergent, those projects are part of the agreement. So if there was something that was emergent and necessary to take care of, that would fall under under this this current agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, your hand went up?
Yes, an ongoing problem down there with the rope around the front of the building.
Okay.
Who's responsible? Is that now, is that still the state's responsibility to take care of that, or is that now the town's responsibility?
So that's an item. If you give me just a second, let me pull up the agreement here. It it is an item that has been discussed in the past. There, there. So Councilmember Anderson, I guess, I don't have a specific and direct answer for that. It is, it's not one of the items that is identified under the, under the project list. I'd have to go back and get an answer for you on that. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, just to give you some background, we were told that the state was going to take care of that, and that's been, I guess, over a year ago.
Okay.
Brent, can you add to that?
So when I, when I read mayor, council members, when I read through the contract, I mean, if you look at the project list and the mayor brought that up, it includes the ADA projects. So the the rope falls under the ADA issues, the fact that there's limited ADA access to the building. So my assumption was that included the situation with the porch and the lack of ADA access as it stands now. The only ADA access is on the far west side of that building on the porch near where the the gift shop is at. So my assumption when I read through the agreement is that's a, that's a project that the state is planning for under the auspices of ADA improvements. Before, they talked about providing a ramp in the location where the old steps were adjacent to the chamber. So when I read through it, that was my assumption is is that was included as part of the ADA improvements.
So some kind of fencing or railing would also fall under ADA?
That was my assumption, sir, because it is a challenge, is an ADA issue that people that are blind, people that are in a wheelchair, there is not a railing there to protect them from falling off the porch. So that was my assumption, but it sounds like that's something that Elon needs to clarify with the state.
Yeah, and I can, I can clarify that. So I will clarify that with the state in what is referred to in the contract under item C does talk about railing for corner of the ramp. So let me go back and let me clarify that completely, and and then get back.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? All right, with seeing none at that time, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to enter into an inter-agency service agreement between Arizona State Parks and the town of Florence to manage McFarland State Historic Park through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Our next item is item seven C, which is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a professional services agreement between the town of Florence and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to manage the McFarland State Historic Park through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars annually for a period of two years. And at this time, I will turn it back over to Mr. Elon Van Alander.
All right, give me just a moment. Bring up my presentation again. All right, so again, this item's for a professional service agreement with the Greater Chamber, or Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to manage and operate Visitor Center and McFarland State Park. A bit of history on this item, the chamber has been managing and operating the park since two thousand and thirteen. Their existing professional services agreement expired on December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. This agreement simply sets forth the terms for the operations of the state park and the visitor center. As as the mayor read, the contract is for fifty-five thousand dollars annually, and also includes utilities paid by the city for for the building there. The agreement under, whoops, sorry about that, the agreement under consideration goes from January first of this year, two thousand and twenty-one, through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. There were a couple minor changes that were made, such as reporting requirements and languages referencing marketing activities. There is an exhibit at the end of the PSA, and I'll show you the two items that we're looking at that were the primary changes that occurred, so highlighted at the bottom of the screen here. The chamber's going to work with the town of Florence in the development of a marketing plan, and they will be assigned to carry out specific items within that plan. There are activities that are undergoing right now, and once those are completed, then the chamber will have a set of of marketing activities to carry forth. As well, the McFarland Historic Park has indicated that there is interest to have a entrance fee for the park area inside. We discussed this with the chamber. We looked at the museum and what they experienced when they instituted a fee there and decided that it would be prudent to move forward with a five-dollar entry fee for the state park. And that would include any touring and facilities beyond the visitor center. So folks who come into the visitor center without paying the fee, but once they go beyond that, there would be a five-dollar fee for further tours. The language here, the funds are going to get deposited into an account. The chamber and staff will sit down and determine the future uses of those funds and create a plan for that usage, and then that will be referenced back in a report, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So that way, we're aware and and know where that money will be, will be used for in the future. And that's it for this item here. So again, what we're looking for is either adoption or otherwise for the PSA. Adoption would mean that it, the chamber would continue to operate and manage the park through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. A no vote would mean that the PSA would be canceled, and as part of that, the chamber would be required to vacate the premises as well. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those now.
Vice Mayor Cortez, go ahead.
Yeah, Elon, I was wondering if you could just real quick, kind of give it a brief on what the contract means. There seems to be confusion with people that they think that this contract means we're in control of the Chamber of Commerce, and they don't understand that it's actually, we're just hiring them to manage the state park. That doesn't give us authority to go and say who can be on their board or anything like that, or interfere with their actual activities as a Chamber of Commerce. So if you could just kind of clear clarify that for the people in the public that don't understand how our contract works with them.
Absolutely. So this PSA solely governs the the operating and management of the state park and the visitor center within the state park and assigns the chamber as that manager and operator for the town. It does not give, it does not give the town the ability to interfere or interject in any of the chambers' normal day-to-day operations of chamber business and otherwise. But it does, again, govern the chambers' management and operations of the visitor center and McFarland State Park specifically. And that is governed by the ISA that you guys just passed as well. So there's, there's items within that that the chamber's responsible to take care of, or the operator's responsible to take care of, and the chamber as that operator will be required to to fulfill those duties as assigned to them within this PSA.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
I didn't want to be petty, but the five dollars, I to me, I don't know why it bothers me so much. I guess I want tourism. I want people to come through it. I understand that the money could go towards a better use. But my only suggestion is maybe five dollars per adult. Sit that way, and it obviously, an adult would have to accompany a minor. But that way, then it would still allow families to affordably enter to, you know, educate our youth as well on the history. So that was maybe my only suggestion. I do, I don't mind a fee. I just can see some larger families not being able to afford to have that experience, and I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Open to discussion.
I agree with you.
I would support that as well.
Especially with, you know, recently when we had the ice rink come about, you know, we had some feedback of, you know, if we could make it more affordable, even though it was only three dollars a person, you know, five dollars to tour the museum quickly, you know, you're not spending all day there. Even donations, you'll probably get more than nothing. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I guess I oppose the five-dollar fee entirely, because we're trying to encourage visitors into our town, and this should be a welcome center. And I just can't see us charging somebody five dollars welcome to our town. It just doesn't make sense to me.
I agree.
So Elon, is it written in there that they can, or is there a way? Because it sounds, you know, I have not heard yet from Councilmember Mendoza. And I want to, but first I just wanted to ask, is there any language in there that gives them the ability, or is that something they need to get permission from council first if they're going to charge a fee?
So this may have been an overlook on my part with the ISA. This this language was included in the state park's ISA. The state park allows, it has allowed for a two to ten-dollar fee to be charged within their facilities. We had conversations with the chamber and discussed with them in regards, again, looking at the museum and the experience the museum had and what impacts it had on their their operations, and we came back with a five-dollar amount being something that would be reasonable. So that being said, I believe in this may be something that that we'd have to address. We would have to change that language within the the ISA with the state park. So I do apologize, that may have been an overlook on my part in regards to that ISA. It's incorporated in the the state park's intergovernmental service agreement.
But just because it is there does not mean that we need to charge that fee, correct?
I believe that, yes, it will. So let me go back and look at the language, but yeah, the language says that we will collect a five-dollar fee.
If you make it a suggestion, a suggested donation of five dollars per adult, something along those lines to where we're not deferring, or I guess deflecting from tourism, or hurting the opportunity for people to be educated about the history of our community, but also suggesting like this would be very helpful to to help the community where they can offer it and say, hey, you know, we're asking for the suggested donation, but not necessarily forcing it.
Is there a way, I forget what the museum charges to go in in there. Is there a way that we could do, hey, it's eight dollars, five of it goes to the museum, three of it goes to McFarland, because then you really are getting a value for your dollar. I still agree with not charging for children, because we do have a lot of families in our community that have more than two kids. And so if you've got a family of eight kids, that's going to get really expensive, so. But is there a way we could get more bang for their buck? Because that would encourage people then to also go to the museum, because I I don't think everybody goes to the museum or vice versa, they go to the museum, but they don't come down to McFarland.
I really love that idea, Michelle. That is really great. If we can do some type of looping it in with the museum to where we're suggesting some type of mutual agreement there, where they can get charged one fee and be able to access both centers for the adults, that'd be a great opportunity.
You'd have to make sure that your accounting is strong in regards to where the money is going to go. There would have to be that tool.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Mendoza?
The only question I had was, do we have numbers of what, how many people have visited that area in the last year? I mean.
Um, yeah, and Roger may be able to clarify this a little more, but I believe that it's it's in the sub-ten-thousand range.
And I know also, oh, this is important for our new council members, over the past four years, we have significantly increased the amount the town contracts with the chamber in order to run and oversee the McFarland Visitor Center as well as host and put on certain events and communicate that back to our council. So that's just another reason why personally, I have challenges in wanting to charge an admission fee, because taxpayers are already paying for this IGA to open the visitor center up. And now we want to charge them again. That's my perception.
Mayor, just to clarify that, so again, the fee would be charged for the state for, the the state park portion, not the visitor center portion. Although I do know that in the community's mind, often those are blended together. So there, there's definite, there's a definite difference between the two. The state park has various, various features, like the Junior Ranger Program and those types of things that are involved. And again, a bit of clarification for the council, the fee, looking back at the ISA, the fee is five dollars per adult. So there is no, no five-dollar fee for children. So it would just be adults within a family. But yes, the fifty-five thousand dollars does pay for operations of the visitor center and the state park, so it's paying for the operations of that. The fee then can can be utilized for various other elements, whether it's for further, further marketing of the of the facilities or for improvements or various other things. So and all of that can be gone through to be determined.
And then in addition to that, if I'm remembering correctly, we have approximately eleven thousand dollars in like utilities and water, wastewater, garbage, and that's, you know, something else that the town contributes in addition to maintenance and upkeep.
Correct. So there are utilities that are included in there, about seven thousand dollars worth of utilities.
Okay.
Annually.
I'm just trying to get like the big picture, because we have some budget sessions coming up too, so just. All right.
I think.
Councilmember Anderson, go ahead. Your hand is up. And then I'll talk to you.
Okay. My question is, is the visitor center going to move out of the building? Or are they still going to be in the building?
The visitor center would, it would all remain in the state, the same physical state that it is now. The differentiation between the visitor center and the state park, as far as the fee goes, would be for the touring going in beyond. So if they wanted to go in and tour the historic part of the center, Would be for the touring going in beyond. So if they wanted to go in and tour the historic part of the center, get more information. That that's where that would apply. But where the gift shop and and that is would be part of that visitor center area, and there would be no fee collected for that.
So that's really part of the park.
It it is within it is within the building, the park itself, yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
So I I was just going to say normally you pay to go to any state park facility like this. So I guess I don't have a problem with charging a fee. I just, again, I'm glad we clarified that it is not for kids. But the money. So if we were to if we were to hire someone to staff this building, it would actually probably cost us more once you factored in salary, insurance. And all the other fees that come along with an employee. So I think we're either breaking even or might be saving money. By contracting it out with someone else, because then we don't have to provide them with sick pay or any of that type of stuff. But the money, the five dollars or whatever it ends up being. Would not go to cover expenses for the building, right? You're saying it would go to maybe further. Marketing or something like that, like you guys would decide that later, or is it going to help cover the expenses that the mayor went over?
And so. Those all are up for discussion on that to kind of determine where the best best use of those dollars would be. It may be, it may be determined that improving, you know, utilizing the dollars for improvements in certain areas is most. You know, the most or the best use of those funds. It might be the marketing's the best use of the funds or something else that wasn't mentioned at this point. But the specific use of the dollars would be determined in the future.
Councilmember.
Ultimately, they could. Oh, I was just going to follow up just that they could ultimately actually generate enough dollars to cover their own expenses to where the town wasn't having to contribute.
At this point, I don't think that wasn't part of the discussion for the those dollars to become the dollars for the chamber to. Essentially contract with the chamber to do. That hasn't been part of that discussion at all.
Okay.
Councilmember Mendoza.
My first thought was, you know, being that the residents are the ones that. You know, pay the bill for. This location. Now, I'm sure we have a lot of visitors that aren't residents. If we can give the residents a discount. To go to this. To go to the park and and. I don't know. That's a suggestion that, you know, since. You know, we do have a lot of. Visitors from out of town that, you know, we can charge them the full price, but the visitor, excuse me, the. You know, if you're a resident, then we'll have a different price for the residents that come in with their families.
Mayor, if I might, again, the ISA and and. The ISA calls out for adults, five dollars per adult. So there's no there the lang- the way the language is there, it would be per adult. We couldn't qualify visitor versus resident. Without changing the terms of the ISA.
I think this is still rather confusing. I'd like to see this table this. And let Elon give some more answers for us. As to who the money goes to. Does it go to the chamber? Does it go to the town?
So ultimately, it's very similar to how the funds that the gift center works right now. So the chamber administers. The gift center. There are items that are sold in there. The portion of the proceeds that that actually come back. I I believe the chamber has some of that on consignment. So. You know, the portion that's on consignment goes to the the business or the artist or what have you. And then there there's a portion of revenue that that would come back to the chamber for the chamber's use. This would be handled similarly. The sales, essentially, any of those ticket sales, they'd be forwarded to the state and the state would send them back. To the original fund. That's why the language here, we have it that it would be deposited into an account and to be held until the proper use was determined. So if that is something that council would like to to have the details specified. Before adopting this, then yes, we would have to table it and come back to it. The only the only thing that that we're looking at right now is that the existing contract that the chamber has and the existing. Revocable lease have expired. So that's not to to apply pressure. That's just informational.
No, I appreciate it. Now, I also see the director of. The Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce in attendance as well. I'd like to just invite him to. Have his microphone unmuted if he wants to communicate this time as well. And perhaps Elon, if we talk this. Out, is it possible for us to include it into the language of the contract this evening?
With the PSA, and I believe that it'd be appropriate for Cliff to to give. Feedback on this, but I believe that we could adjust the language within the PSA. That is our document.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, absolutely. If if Roger can. Make the. Decision if he doesn't have to go back to the board, but. You can, you can certainly be able to change the provision before you. Absolutely.
First, Roger. I also want to say really pleased with the management that you've had with the chamber and the communication that you have with our council. And I want to thank you for always being in attendance at our meetings because it makes times. Like this really easy just to. Bring you aboard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Glad to be here. And thank you for mentioning Gordy. He's going to be missed. Missed by all. Not exactly sure what you want to talk about, what you want me to talk about. Most of the stuff that Elon has expressed is 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 right or close to being right. One thing that I think that I don't know if I'm allowed to say, but Elon and I had talked about using this money. It's not, and just clarifying, Madam Mayor, what you what you kind of used suggested earlier. Or everybody else has kind of suggested, this isn't going to the chamber for chamber profit. It, you know, we're going to use it. To, I mean, Elon Elon mentioned maybe fixing up the the building a little bit, but also we kind of talked about is using it for tourism dollars. To continue to advertise, to continue to, depending on how much it is. I don't know if it's, you know, whether it's a program, whether it's. More just anything for tourism. I. Wasn't ready to to talk to it yet, but that was kind of what we were what we were talking about using that money for. Elon was correct that we have just under 10,000 people in 2019. I didn't look at 2020 for obvious reasons. But it was just, it was 99, 38 or something like that when I just looked at my my files. But the chamber is is happy with the contract. We kind of break even. We don't really make a profit on. I think I've sent that that money that those numbers over to to council a couple of times. That this isn't a, this isn't a money making thing for the chamber. It's something, you know, that seems appropriate just with the visitor center and. And historical aspect of it, it's definitely a win. But, you know, we. And we're not looking to make a profit with that five dollar charge. And to answer everybody's question, we took kind of a poll of people internal and it was mixed on whether they wanted to charge or not. But we're just looking forward to getting open. But I can answer any other questions. And yes, to the to Mr. Matisse's comment, I can I can. Speak to any changes that we want to make.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Neil.
I'm not sure. I could have swore he said that the charge could be from two to $10. Is that is that what you said?
The the state has allowed for fees to be collected from two to $10 within these parks. We came to a five dollar number when when we discussed. So again, that's written into the ISA. Should that need to be changed, then then we'll have to address that.
So it's locked in at five dollars or two dollars. We can't go to the two dollars, is what you're saying.
It it is possible. The state, the state gave us the ability to go between two and $10. That's that's the amount that they've approved within their within their. I would say their board is how they they refer to it.
Okay, was. I have a lot of children and then going to museums and things really hit me in the in the wallet real hard, Johnny, no. But five dollar charge for adults only, I'm more than cool with that. I would like to see it at two or three dollars, but. It's gonna help. That's it.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Again, I want to thank you for being here, Mr. Beatty. And if there's no further questions, comments, concerns, we can entertain a motion at this time.
My motion that we approve that we approve. A professional service agreement between the Town of Florence and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to manage McFarland State Park. Through December 31, 2022, an amount not to exceed $55,000 annually for a period of two years.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item D. Is discussion approval disapproval? To enter into a revocable license slash lease agreement. Between the Town of Florence and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. To manage McFarland State Historic Park through December 31, 2022. And again, Mr. Elon Vounder.
All right, Mayor, Members of Council. Got to get one second.
So this one is for the revocable license lease agreement for the chamber that is. Sits under the PSA. So as part of the PSA, the chamber can have office space within McFarland State Park. This is the agreement that governs that office space and the use, the use of the facility there. So again, the chamber's been managing and operating since 2013. A part of the agreement allows for them to have office and space for for the chamber there. The current revocable license agreement expired December 31, 2020. This is to renew that in in. Line with the professional services agreement that you just passed. And that will go through December 31, 2022. The terms of this agreement have not been changed. They remain the same. So yes vote would adopt it and no vote would mean that the license would be canceled and the chamber would be required to vacate the premises.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Does any member of council have any questions or comments? All right, with that, we need a motion.
My motion that we enter into a revocable license lease agreement between the Town of Florence and Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. To manage McFarland State Park through December 31, 2022.
Back in. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Item number eight is our manager's report this evening. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, I only have one item this evening, and that is. As you've seen, Ben and I have been sending out quite a few emails recently about the legislative session being kicked off. As well as the governor dropping his proposed budget last week. We will be adding an agenda item before the managers report. On future agendas that will be a legislative update as we do every year during the legislative session. And we'll be coming forward with our legislative agenda in the month of February. For council to weigh in on that legislative agenda. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item nine, and this is our second call to the public. Same ground rules as Red Prior. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time?
I have not seen anybody unmute their mics, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to go ahead and close call to the public. And go on to our call to the council for current events only. I will start with Mr. Mendoza.
Well, all I want to say is. I want to send my condolences to the Cordova family and. I just heard this morning that. The Covert family lost another member. To. To COVID-19. So. My family will be praying for both of those families.
And Councilmember Neil.
Just wanted to say condolences to the Cordova family. I grew up with a bunch of them. Gordy was a little older than me, but. I know them very well. Very good family. Florence throwing through. God bless your family and God be with your family.
Councilmember Hughes.
Sending condolences also. He will be missed.
Councilmember Larson.
I'd also like to send my condolences to the family as well as I know personally quite a few people that are. Either in grieving or that they have family members who are suffering right now in hospitals. Or having severe complications because of COVID. So just continue to, you know, be mindful of your surroundings and. You know, mask up if you can, hand sanitizer. You guys know the rules, right? So just take care of each other, be mindful. Of your neighbor, making sure that everyone is loved on from afar, doing what you can, being kind.
Councilmember Anderson.
Well, the same condolences to Gordy's family. Also, I want to express, you know. Condolence to Lisa Garcia. She lost her father in all this week. And a lot of you may not have known that, but. Joel's dad passed away of COVID. So want to remember him in our prayers also. But on an up note, tomorrow's going to be a great day. Maybe. We hope so. We hope things are going to change for the better. So let's just. Keep. Positive thoughts about our new government coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cortez.
I'll piggyback on everybody and with what. Councilmember Anderson just said, tomorrow's a big day for our country. It is every time we. Change hands of government. Please be respectful of other people's political views and. Let's move forward instead of backwards. I know our country has made great strides. And we've got a long way to go, but we have come a long way as well. And so. Let's all just be mindful that we may not agree, but we can all agree that we love living in the United States. And that we love our neighbors. Like Kristen said, to please, you know, be safe. Sanitize, keep your distance, wear a mask if that's. If you can, if you medically can't, then I understand, but. Without that medical reason to not wear a mask, we really really should all have one on. I know I wear one everywhere I go and I still caught COVID, so. But my son never caught it. And. I just, you know, I want to send my condolences to Lisa and to Joel. And to the Cordova family.
Thank you. I'm sure you could hear the echo of the sentiments this evening of loss and condolences. Few who know of. Somebody who is in need of assistance, there is resources available that you could reach out to. We are going to make sure that that information is also posted out and shared. We with our community. We have shared with our employees. But if you are in need, we have strong supports throughout our community and consistently through and through. Lawrence has always proven that we are there for one another. Florence has always proven that we are there for one another. So with that, take care, be safe. We are going to be adjourning to an executive session to discuss with government agents to these entities and private entities involving the acquisition, purchase, sale or lease of real property and property related to the Town of Florence's water and wastewater systems, including up grid expansions and contracts related there too at this time. So with that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.